I guess I would call the order the Board of Selectmen workshop or budget workshop for today. And basically, the only agenda item is the board to discuss and take possible action on our recommended budget for 2024, 2025 fiscal year. And so with that, we can start our discussions. And I think I gave the board members a handout, and if we just start with that, the first page basically just outlines what changes we kind of agreed to at the last meeting. One was making a change to the registrar voters' budget, assuming we're going to cover what they need. But we just, you know, felt it wasn't, we shouldn't fully fund it right now because we really don't know how early voting is going to work and how things are going to kind of play out for the first year of early voting. So that resulted in additional savings of $4,000, and then we talked about the pension funding and setting up a way to use fund balance to offset some of the pension fund increases. We did this last year. And so Stacy went forward and put forward a three-year plan where we would basically appropriate $100,000 and then use that over a period of three years to offset the budgeted increase in the pension contributions. And so that results in a savings for this year's budget of $45,000.
So is that a fund, is that a set aside of today's dollars that then get applied in subsequent years?
Yes, so what we did last time is we assigned a portion of fund balance and just kept it reserved in fund balance. We didn't create a fund, put it in a fund, still in the general fund. But when I look at the unassigned fund balance, that amount will be out of there. It'll be assigned for future fire pension contributions.
Okay.
So we're assigning.
It's a virtual reserve account.
Right, and last year that we had talked about actually doing multiple years, right? But we ended up only doing the one.
Exactly, last year we had a whole plan, I think it may have been over five years, and if we did that, we wouldn't be dealing with it now.
Right.
But we didn't, we just did year one to kind of, you know, take care of this current fiscal year. But now this will help now for three years at least.
Okay, yeah.
I should say, so why not shoot for a fund like that that gets us into the, back into the $70,000 range per year?
We could, I mean, I was just trying to help the annual capital budget coming up. If we want to do that, I would recommend we look at all the pensions then maybe, because eventually it does level out. So I think, and Peggy didn't show, but I did do, I think, five or six years, and eventually levels itself out where we won't have to do that.
Yeah, this is supposed to 20.
But this was a scenario that I kind of planned.
I mean, short of actually infusing another million dollars into the account.
Right.
What would this look like? This would be, if you, if you tried to get it back down to 70, maybe it would be 250,000? Does he have that much?
Yeah, you know, when you take out more, then it kind of, it's a domino effect, like going to the outer years that way. So if I reduce this year's budget, now the, now I'm into the following year and I have to make up that reduction.
That same amount, right?
Exactly, so I'd have to.
If it's another $50,000, it's 50,000 times four.
Exactly, right, so I'd have to play with that if that's what you were interested in doing. I was trying to smooth out as much as I can and focus on the upcoming three to five years. So this was.
It's a quick 50 grand this year in savings to the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so doing it this way, I mean, we could talk about, well, why don't we go through.
You're saying go look at the other pensions too?
Well, I'm not necessarily against that, but this is the one we monkeyed with, right? This is the one that is not growing organically, it's, or through an actuarial table, it's because we changed, we changed the plan.
Right, we improved the benefits.
So that's why I've been focused on it and focused on trying to mute the, the operating impact of that change.
Hey, that's smart, yeah.
Yeah, and I think these numbers reflect a million dollars that we did the infusion before. We also did after that another $200,000, which is not reflected yet.
Right, so with all of those changes, it would be a $53,000 increase to the budget.
Before the $200,000, yes.
Right, right, so, okay, so we can stick a pin in that and move through the rest of it if you will.
Okay.
You're suggesting add 53K or?
No, so if you look at the bottom line on the page, this year's increase over last year is $52,000.
Yeah.
And then in two, three, and four, the, the numbers are much smaller.
No, 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 this is, it's, this year's budget is 24, 25. So the increase is, it's, it's basically no increase, it's $634. This, the 52 was what lasted, yeah.
I was misreading that, I was misreading that.
Yeah, so it would have been 45,000.
Right, so she was trying to neutralize it from the budget, basically, that's how she came up with this schedule.
Well, I think my point still stands, whatever the number is, take it back to the pre-change number, which was between 60 and 70,000 of a year.
Right, which was the year before.
Right, 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 it's here.
So. So you would, you would actually see the line decrease this year and then stay flat in the out year, in years two and three.
Yeah, and if we do decide, because I was hoping if you do all approve, we can maybe take action on this plan, and then going forward, we still have the, we can use the 100,000. If we change it, we can still spread it out the way you all want to spread it out.
Okay, so we can move on.
Okay, so basically with those two changes, the revised budget now shows we've come down a bit from what we were looking at last year. So the town operating budget is now much closer to 3%, it's at 0.8%, which we were looking at 3 and 2.27% last time. And then obviously, this is still slightly higher than what we had last year. A lot of that has to do with our labor costs, it's like 7% of the increase is the labor issue, because we have some new contracts and then healthcare. But the overall budget request now is down to 4.21%, when we met last time, we were at 4.36%. We're now at 4.21%, and luckily, that number is actually below where we were last year. And then the overall, if you combine the, with the Board of Ed approved budget, or recommended budget, we come to a 3.69% increase. And last year's was at 3.29%, so it's a 40 basis point increase from what we had last year. So that, that's kind of what, with those changes in there. So this also assumes on the next page, some of the things that we talked about where we pulled things out of the budget, and so we would need to approve, we would be recommending these types of appropriations, one would be ARPA to pay for downtown lighting and the university management software. We would do this CIP small equipment fund that we talked about. And I was, I did speak to the Board of Finance Chair, and there's definitely some openness to this, and I think some, you know, there would be some support on the board's plans for setting this type of account up, because I think it's just an ongoing thing that we could have. So we would appropriate maybe $100,000 to fund the account initially, and then we could get, we could cover some of the police, a small equipment request this year, which totaled $52,000 out of that fund. I also put on here another CIP infusion, because I know this has been talked about a lot with the excess fund balance, how are we using it and where should it go? And everybody agrees that it would be great to have even more money going to CIP, because that helps us in the future, right? So we, this could be up to discussion, I don't think we need to decide this now, but do we do another big infusion? I said maybe up to a million, but that's a conversation, I think, between us and then the Board of Finance. Last year, we did three and a half million. And part of this, as you know, as part of the Madison investment plan, is by doing the infusion upfront, we don't have to put in as much in future budget years in order to sustain our spending plan.
You're basically increasing the base.
Right, so, so that's something we could talk about as more of a concept, and then funded the pension funding, which we were talking about. So these would be kind of appropriations that we would be doing in addition to passing the budget.
But not tonight, we don't need that.
I, I think we could decide to vote on some of them if we're comfortable, like ARPA, we could vote on those, and we could vote on the equipment funds. And if we want to do the pension or not, we could talk about that, we could vote on some of them tonight if we wanted, or we could hold off and do it in another meeting. But obviously, you know, these are things that, some of these were things we pulled out of the budget, so we just, knowing if we're going to pass a budget and those things aren't in there, this is how we would fund them. The next page is really now the tax rate, and so it's a little complicated this year because of the rebound, right? So it's hard to compare apples to apples. I think overall, if you're going to include the budgets as is that we just presented, and then use last year's assumptions about how revenue assumptions and things like that, we're going to be high, the, the tax rate, you know, the mill rate would be going up probably closer to 3%, which is something this board, I know, does not, we've always been targeting 2% or less, right?
Yeah.
So Stacy and I could kind of play around with like, okay, how do we get to that 2% number? And so some options is, I'll start with the revenue pieces first, and then we can talk about the Board of Ed. But really, there's a couple assumptions, and these are decisions really the Board of Finance makes, but we can make some suggestions to them about where we saw opportunities, because we want that mill rate increase to be as low as possible, right?
Yeah.
So one of them is using the fund balance, which we've been using consistently the last couple of years, and it's varied every year about how much we've used from the fund balance. I think in running the numbers, if we were to recommend 750,000, we did that in 2021. Last year, we did 500. So we're trying to lower that number, but I think this year, there's some different circumstances that would justify using 750, and we have plenty of funding for it. The other thing is, we don't, we've not really budgeted for all this interest income. So when we calculated the mill rate, they've not really accounted for the fact that we're getting like over 5% or four and a half to 5% on this $20 million balance. So that's income that's coming in that was really not being accounted for fully when they calculate the mill rate. So it's been two years consistent, I think it's very easy to come up, we could probably budget in another million of income coming in from interest. So that would help a lot of the mill rate. And then the other thing is the ECS funding, which we get to the educational cost sharing formula, which we have been getting consistently for the last five years from the state. There was a fear, I think it was five years ago, prior when I came on board, there was talk at one point of that going away. That never happened, but we've never been budgeting for it. So we've been getting at least $300,000, they've honored the commitment every year. So this year, we're being told by CCM, it's going to be, the governor's proposed budget's $395,000, so we could just budget for that. We used to budget for it, and then we got nervous.
Right.
But it's really been like five years, so that's another reason we've been building up this income, you know, and not really applying it. So if you take those assumptions, then I said, okay, we still need some room to get us to 2%. And so I kind of backed, we kind of backed into a number that if, if the Board of Education were to kind of, or the, you know, the Board of Finance really is the one that would look at the Board of Education budget. If there was reduction in their budget, and we say it's their request, so it's not reducing their budget, but it's reducing their request, by around $200,000, that would get us down to around 2% or possibly below 2%, right?
Of a tax.
Of a tax increase. So this would be kind of the formula, if, you know, and we don't have.
Not inclusive of these other changes too, right?
Right, inclusive of the changes that, yeah, everything.
Each of them have to happen.
These all have to happen, so this is kind of the formula to get there. So there's a lot of different ways you can skin the cat, but this was a reasonable one, I think, when we went through it. So we wouldn't, these would be just kind of recommendations, it's not, we don't control these things, because we can't control, we can't cut the Board of Ed budget, right? We can't make the mill rate count, you know, assumptions and all that stuff, and set the mill rate. But we could suggest this based on the budget that we're passing for the town. And, and I know the Board of Ed, you know, has, they work very hard on their budget, but they also have to do it in the dark, not knowing the bigger picture. They're the first out of the gate, I always say, and they don't understand how it all comes together, just like the staff budget came in a lot higher, right? And then we kind of sharpened our pencils, I sharpened the pencil and said, okay, that's not going to work. So we're at a point now where we can see all the pieces and then kind of try to balance things out, so.
Everybody's got to do their part here, I think.
Right, and so, so this, this is, I guess, I was trying to, you know, give you an idea that if we pass the budget as we are now, there's a pathway to get to that 2% number, or ideally less, and there's some moving parts in there a little bit, but it gives us a, 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 because I think when we first started this discussion, I was like, how are we going to get to this number? So I don't know, Stacy, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I mean, the only, a few things on the mill rate, you know, we were running all different scenarios. Right now, we're looking at the gramless increase of 38.3%, that's before any of the VAA's are done, so that number could come down. We're also looking at, we have some economic development assistance programs, so I need to wrap my arms around that. So our goal was to try to stay around the 2%, but there still are areas that I need to get further information on, knowing that it's a Board of Finance thing anyway.
When is that stabilized?
Usually right at the end, yeah, so.
So things.
Because of abatements, although we changed the senior program, now we're offering both. We used to offer the frees and/or the local, now we're offering both, so that's going to have an impact. Like I said, the EDC, you know, try to bring businesses in, it'll have a short-term impact, eventually we'll get all the revenue, but it phases in that. So I have to get, gather all that information, the senior applications, we won't know that until, I mean, it opened February 1st, but we won't know that until we get a mill rate and what that value looks like. So it's continuous, and it'll be a Board of Finance thing, but based on what we know right now, I think it's fair that our goal was around 2%, but I just want to put that note out there that it is subject to change.
Good.
And when we looked at, obviously, with the gram was growing at 38%, the mill rate is going down a lot. It's not going down 38% because the budget's going up. So when we looked at the impact to the tax, to our taxes, we basically took that gramless growth, applied it to an average assessment of a $400,000 house, which is what we typically look at, and that's the number that Peggy's referring to, we want to get that number to a reasonable number, not 3%, more closer to 2. And that's what we've been working on.
Yeah, it, it, this is tricky, because.
Lot of moving parts.
Yeah, because individual taxpayers are seeing big swings in their assessment, right? So you can't, so we can only look at like the average taxpayer and then say, okay, we want to keep that average number down to 2%. Some people will see higher, some people will see actually much lower than that, you know.
Or ours probably get a lot of help.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, the appeals started today, or yesterday was the deadline, I think, for people to file.
Yeah, they start in March, yeah, March 1st.
So, yeah, and I think this is where from, because I know it's, I know we always want to understand where the town budget fits into this and what impact it's going to have. And so I was trying to figure out, knowing that, how to, what's the pathway to get to where we would like to be? And really, these are Board of Finance tools, but, you know, it was kind of some suggestions about how they could potentially get there. And, you know, knowing where we kind of landed on the town budget.
So what do you need from us tonight?
Well, I think that we could vote on the actual town budget, right? And if we wanted to recommend, vote on some of the appropriations.
Let's do it.
And so what we did last time, let's look at this, we, because we did, we approved town budget and then a motion to recommend. So the question is, we wanted to say, we did do a, a motion to approve the Board of Education budget, which, which is really just a recommendation.
Oh, we stopped.
I know, I know we did too, but she said we actually voted.
I think we threw in the recommend in the motion.
So motion to recommend, it shouldn't be motion to approve, it would be motion to recommend.
Or recommending them to.
Well, okay, so.
And I think just consider some, we could just say consider reductions.
I was going to say, just to be consistent with the discussion we've had here, we shouldn't recommend a budget that we're then asking them to reduce.
Yeah, I agree.
So maybe we pass on the vote altogether. Just have as part of our record, the, the, just, we want to see, we want, we want to see the Board of Ed try to, to squeeze a little bit more out of their budget, knowing that that's really a conversation between them and the Board of Finance.
Fair, yeah.
So not, so not, not, not a formal recommendation.
But I mean, if we vote on it, then I think it's hard to then ask.
Right.
We've already voted on it, there's no.
Okay.
Fair.
No, I understand, it's a tricky situation, because I think, you know, I, I also think we all feel that they presented a very responsible budget, you know? And I think it's now looking in the bigger context, we just have to balance everything.
Back to everybody doing their part.
So, so, and then what we did do at the last workshop a year ago, we did recommend the special appropriations, we didn't vote on those. So, so the ones that I have listed on page, I would recommend at page four, the one I would hold off on is the CIP infusion, because this is where we haven't really done the analysis yet to figure out what's a good number that's going to be meaningful, right, to the CIP. So that's something that I think Stacy would want to come back and make a recommendation.
Yeah, and so maybe we could just talk more about the logic behind that, and, and you tell me where I go off the rails. Now, pre-funding, is we're, we're pre-funding future operating expenses through an allocation, so that in the upcoming years, we would have theoretically some headspace to use that for debt service. And it mutes the impact of the debt service, is that right?
Yeah, the way that MIP was, the, the way we set MIP up, the, the whole way it worked was we were building up the base, putting money into CIP, knowing that eventually debt service was going to grow, and because we upfronted the funding into CIP page you go, we can reduce that because the balance stays there, grow, and then the debt service is getting higher, so it would not have a material impact on the overall budget.
Right, so if we were putting in every year out of the operating budget $300,000, and we pre, and we pre-funded that for a period of years, that would in theory be $300,000 a year that we could divert to the debt service, and taxpayers would feel no impact.
Exactly, it's smoothing it all out, rather than being lower and then all of a sudden a spike, it was smoothing it all out.
Right, is there, what is the number, how much of the annual contribution to the CIP did we do last year?
We did 3.5.
Was it 100% of the annual contribution, was it 50%, was it?
Infusion or the?
We did three and a half million.
We infused three and a half million, how, how does that, how was that intended to replace annual contributions?
Yeah, so there was, there's a whole lovely spreadsheet that I would love to share with you all.
That's my favorite thing to do.
Yes, I know, and basically, we were growing CIP at 3%, what we would normally do if MIP did not exist. CIP typically, we would put in additional 3% every year. In the last three to four years, we bumped it up, so knowing that this next year is the first, not this 24, 25, or 25, 26, we will stop, start to drop that funding, so it was a whole calculation. However, the 3.5, which was mostly Island Avenue, the 2.3 that we got in from Island Avenue, another 1.2, we took that money, infused it, so that I could further reduce the annual capital budget into CIP. So if we do that again, like Peggy said, let's throw out there a million, I'm not saying a million at this point, but if we do that, then we could further reduce the CIP, which will not only help bring on the debt service, but it could help if we did have spikes in the operating. Does that answer your question?
No, exactly.
Okay.
How much would we have to put in to not have to make a new contribution to CIP for the next six years?
The assumption for MIP was the overall budget was going up at 2.58%, knowing that and seeing what the budget looks like this year, I do believe to Peggy's point, we're going to have to infuse, and I'm going to re-have to look at this whole MIP program going forward, because the assumptions were, everything built out for the next 20 years of this debt service was based on a 2.58 overall budget increase. So now that this budget is higher, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board, see what we need to infuse, and then maybe come up with a new assumption, maybe 2.58 was a little aggressive. And then we're going to have to revisit the MIP and see what we can infuse to, again, keep everything stable in the outer years. So this kind of threw it out, if things went up 2.58%, we would be fine, we're on track, everything, we don't have to do an additional infusion, CIP's going to go down next year, debt's going to start to rise, 2030, when debt really peaks, we'll be okay, because CIP is going to be really low, and then we'll start to balance out, but now that this kind of threw off my assumption, so we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and look at additional infusion, and I don't have that number.
Why, I'm curious, why, why 60?
Well, the, so the more we don't need to take operating funds to put into CIP, the more headspace we create for debt service.
Oh, yeah, totally.
And the other way to look at it is that excess fund balance, if we were to start holding tranches aside dedicated to debt service, we're really deep into the Board of Finance work now, aren't we? This, this is really the.
Yeah, but I mean, to your point, we've been doing this for four years, we've been building up the base for CIP, knowing that our debt service is increasing.
With the infusions, right?
Yeah, well, we're building up the annual budget for CIP.
Remember, we had additional budget requests for three years in a row, the first, our first budget, remember? The right thing to do, we put $300,000 more into the CIP, I think, so we went 300, then 500, then 750 or something.
Yeah, I have it all.
And then we've done the infusions too, so we've been.
We've been building up the base, because the debt service has to be built into the base, so we can't just infuse and not build up the base, because eventually that debt is coming up to the highs of $300,000. So we developed the plan, we've been following it, I think we were on track until we kind of came to this little pickup with the operating budget being a little bit more than we were anticipating in our original assumptions, and it's a planning tool, we knew it was going to change.
Yeah.
So I think we need to go back to the drawing board and then look at a possible additional infusion.
And to keep, and I think it would be good for, as part of that conversation, to, you know, so you can see, you can almost see a graph of like, the lines cross, right? You're increasing this and the other one's going down, and you can kind of see how that swims out. But, you know, I think it's worth doing because we still have the $20 million, and I know there's a lot of concern about CIP going forward, because we look at those balances over the next couple of years, and.
Reduce the interest conversation, it does, it does a lot.
And we're also throwing off how much in interest income, you know, so.
And the debt is a given, like we have, we have to pay the debt, like there's no running in the debt. And even the operations, you know, our operating budget is our operating budget. CIP would be the one that would take the hit, because that's probably the most flexible, and we didn't want that to happen, and that's why we.
We're bringing it back.
And that's why we started the Madison Investment Plan, we didn't want CIP to take the hit, knowing that, we didn't want operations to suffer, our programming, our staffing, knowing the debt was coming on, so we thought of this three or four, once a referendum, like we were on this, so maybe I'm going back way too far.
No, but we started, I remember the first, with, with Aaron, who's on the board, our first budget negotiations, we wanted to add to the capital. I remember it was like, we need to start building this up, so it's been an objective, and, you know, but things change, and so we just have to adapt. And also, we're still dealing with a higher inflationary environment, wages have gone up and healthcare has gone up. We had a couple of good years where we really had no impact on the budget because of healthcare expense, because of our experience rate, but that's different now, so, you know, we have to just adjust to that. But I think it's a good discussion later, I probably would be ready, you know, we would be ready to make a recommendation tonight on what that number is.
When, is there a timeline that we have to make that recommendation by?
No, 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 it was just more about we're in the budget.
For budget, right.
Well, we don't even really need that for, we voted on the three and a half million last May after the budget passed.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have to have that number finalized, I think it would be good to get these other things finalized, because they do impact, you know? You want to have all this tidied up before the new budget kicks in.
Yeah, and I think everything that's in the budget right now is going to do nothing but help us to get to our goal. And once we, now that I know if the total budget is going up over 3%, we'll just rerun everything, we'll figure out. We'll figure out what we should infuse if we, if our goal is still to keep things somewhat stable. And then we could always vote on that later. But I don't think at this point, what we're doing now could hurt anything going forward.
I'm assuming we're all still in agreement, right? That it's the 2% sort of is our fogey at this point, right?
So I'm just going to add to it. I'm not going to disagree with you. The, it's the snowball down the hill. Like I said earlier, we already pushed that snowball years ago. But, um, if we, anything we do to shave it today makes it a little bit easier. In the peak year, 2030, what is the estimated?
That's our highest debt service.
I, I, you know, I'm going to guess it's in the high eight million.
Yeah, I thought it was in the eight million, right?
Okay, so, so what to, for context.
We're at two million now.
We're, um.
Well, actually two million plus the high school. So we're at 2.4.
Yeah. So, so on top of the operating budget, there's going to be a year where there's a, an additional six-ish million dollars.
Right.
That's not going to be fun.
No.
So.
So we got to start making.
The things we can do, the things we can do to soften that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to make it easier for the lung. So that's your six-year coverage.
Right.
And that's what we were trying to do to start to build up.
Yeah.
That base. So when we get there and build up CIP, so we can drop the CIP. I mean, the CIP is up to five, over five million now. And I think in year five, it drops down to like 400,000. Because we can, because we built up those reserves. So if it's at five million now in year five, we're only putting in 400,000. We still have our five-year plan, but we build up those reserves. Now we can bring that down.
So the other big moving part then that I see is again, it comes back to the pensions. You know, taking care of the pensions today decreases our future payments.
Right.
I agree with you, Bruce, because pension funding, it, it's another given. No matter what changes we make to our programming, we've still got to fund that pension, right? It's a given. It's a known. The actuary can predict it to some extent. Uh, so.
I think I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah. And to Peggy's point, these ultimately are the Board of Finance. That's going to have to make.
But we can send signals that.
Well, we can send signals.
Yeah.
And, and I think where our role is, there is an excess fund balance. We should be signaling the operating levers we want to pull on that money.
Yeah.
And if it's not ours to actually pull, you know, to say to the Board of Finance, we'd really like it if you went this way. You know, because otherwise we're looking at saying, let's just take two and a half million and dump it into a project. Um, which I think would be within our operating authority. It's still have to approve it because they have to approve everything, but. I, I, it's, it's all about how do we mute future increases? And, and the, the capital one is, is, we're in the middle of it and I think it's the right thing to do. I, I, the only other lever I see is the pension.
Well, let's take one step at a time. Let's focus on, let's do the budget first.
But the pension discussion doesn't change tonight's discussion about the budget, does it?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
So it's like the CIP infusion.
It's not like we have to come to an agreement on the pension to do the budget.
It's another conversation we should be having. Yeah.
But that, and that's something though, if we were to do any type of pension infusion like we did last year, you need to do it by the end of the fiscal year so you can see it.
Yes, in the future.
So we would want to know by June 30th if we wanted to do a pension infusion again. I think the issue with pension is that, as, as anything, you're dealing with a lot of assumptions, right? And, um, so you, I think you have to be a little careful about how much you're proof funding, you know? But that's why we did kind of weigh a million and then we did another 250 or 200, so.
Is this actually the fire pension?
This is for the fire pension. Yes, yeah.
Yep.
And I do want to correct myself. Of course, you pulled up CIP. I said right now, I mean, five million.
That is always a good thing, right?
Yeah, I took out three million. Not the 400,000 was CNR. I was thinking of CNR. So it does go down about $2 million, but that's going to help as the debt comes on in year six. It peaks, it peaks in year six, yes.
Well, thank you. To start checking things off here, the ARPA one seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, same.
The CIP small equipment fund is again, is a no-brainer.
Should we, should we just, should we start with the budget itself though? Just approve the budget and then do the special appropriation? The process standpoint?
Is that what you want to do?
So I guess then it would be, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as, as delivered at 3.08%.
Well.
We'll know.
The town to mask the requested budget, so, um.
So 4.2%.
So, which was 33,000, 33,964,100? Yes, that's the right number.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further conversation?
It is. It's a big number. Budget when I, well, the budget when Al starts, when Al started.
$27.15. Well done, Al. Well done.
All right, uh, I guess all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. We passed.
We got through another season.
Yeah. Wait, I hope I'm in the right one. That's the right one, right? That I read 33,964. Yep. Okay, so, um, then the second thing we would do is we're not going to do the Board of Ed, right? We're just kind of declining to make a recommendation at this point and leave that to the Board of Finance.
Well, I think we're suggesting, we're making an audible suggestion that we want them to reduce.
Right, right.
Right? I think we're all nodding our heads, so.
And then I think the next thing would be, um, uh, I'll, I'll make this motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of, uh, American Rescue Plan funds to fund the downtown lighting project for $26,000. And, um, the emergency management software, emergency management software, uh, of $10,000. Okay, uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So one quick thing, could you, last year when we made the motions for the special appropriation, we said a motion to recommend the following special appropriations to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance official approval. So we then brought it to your.
Oh, to our board again.
To your boards.
Because this was not a.
Because this is a workshop type of thing.
All right, so. All right, I'm making a mo, I'm making a motion to, um, recommend to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance regular.
For official approval.
For official approval, uh, the ARPA fund. So I'm amending my motion. You got that?
Or do you just say all of them?
No, I don't think we're ready to do all of them, actually.
Yeah, no, then I was going to say the next one would be then I'm, we're making a motion to, uh, recommend to bring to the Board of Selectmen, uh, and Board of Finance, um, the establishment of a fund within CIP, to fund small equipment purchases, uh, with an appropriation of $100,000. So.
Second.
Okay, great. And any further discussion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that was Jen and Scott, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. And then the last one, do you want to do the fire pension or do we want to wait? Do we want to do this?
I'd like to see Stacy do some more numbers.
On the pension?
On the, on the fire pension, yeah. And then if there's a recommendation on the other pensions as well. Again, this is, we're really sort of getting into the Board of Finance.
Well, right now our budget has basically no increase in the funding. So we're going to have to do something, right? Or else our, our funding level is going to go down. So we know we have.
So I would never suggest less. I'm suggesting there's a path maybe more.
Right, yeah, okay.
So, um, so can we vote on just the 45 at least for the one year or you want to just wait?
So the 45 would cover at least contribution. The actuary is recommending that we.
It's fine.
So I, I'm doing, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, I would like to make a motion to approve a special appropriation to assign fund balance of $45,000 for pension fund contributions.
Can we do 120?
Five.
No, I have to do 45 for the one year.
We're just doing 45K.
Do whatever you want. Work it better.
Well, no, no, it's, yeah, I just, I'm stuck on that 65 where, um, that it used to be, but, um.
Do 145.
Well, no, but this would, if you did this in one year, it would totally, we just voted on a budget amount that assumed basically no pension in cha, in change, it assumed a pension contribution, but no change in the pension contribution. So that would mean if we didn't do anything else, you'd be at a lower funding level, right? Um, so, so the 45 will at least keep us at the same funding level and then we could do more later.
Yes, yes. The more we spend today, the less there is for the, for the year after that, right? So I, again.
We'll find out when that more.
No, I'm, I'm thinking about it in very simplistic terms.
Or, or we can do the 100. We're all in agreement. We want to do at least the 100.
If you get, if you get the operating line back.
Do you guys want to do the 100?
If you, if you get the operating line back to 65, it's a further reduction in the budget. It's.
Right.
Let's do 100 now and just pending refinement. How about that?
So 100 applied to this year's budget.
No, this, this was going to be the three years. What, what I'm recommending in here.
That's what I'm clarifying with Scott. Cause I think I heard him say 100 for this year.
If it's this year, then we have to go back and.
No, let's do it over the three. Let's do what you're saying.
And then the Board of Finance could do that. They could decide to take a whole chunk this year and do 300,000 over the next three years.
Let's do 100. We still have to come back in future meetings anyway. So this is a workshop.
Yeah.
That's right. So, okay, so I'm going to amend my motion to, um, approve a special appropriation to assign fund, fund balance of $100,000 for future pension fund contributions over the years.
Gentlemen.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. And that, that may, all right, but that's going to come to our poll meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just bundle, we'll just bundle, that could be the consent agenda, right?
Yeah.
If you don't want to do that in the consent agenda.
We already voted on?
Well, I mean, it.
It looks, uh.
It, it might, yeah. I, I think it deserves its own agenda item.
And then CIP infusion we were holding off on.
Cause we don't have the numbers in.
Right, right, right. So, so good. Well, um, so that's really the purpose of the workshop. I think, so I'm going to be sending on a draft of the presentation. I'm hoping Monday, uh, for the Tuesday night presentation, it's going to be very similar to last year's, but with the updated numbers. That's for the public hearing. I think one thing I'm struggling with is how you talk about the mill rate issue, right? So if the board is good with this, would you be okay if I put in a, uh, potential mill rate, assuming Board of Selectmen recommendations? And then it could reflect the revenue assumptions and the, uh, BOE reduction number.
I, so. Yeah, you, you, you're free to do that. My concern is the mill rate is a little bit more disconnected this year because of the rebound. Right? I'll use me as an example. We can mess with the mill rate all we want. My assessment went up faster than the towns. So I'm getting a tax increase. Uh, I think if we start to equate what your tax bill is to a mill rate, it makes for some unhappy people down the road who weren't thinking it through that way. I'm just worried that a little information is very, very dangerous. And we don't have all the information.
So is, is it better to leave the mill rate information for the Board of Finance then? Just not, because normally I do put it into my presentation.
We expect the mill rate to come down.
Would be, but maybe we just say, we're just going to show the budget information. We'll leave it at that because it's getting presented now to the Board of Finance.
The mill, the mill rate is coming down. We know that. We just don't know how much.
Right, right.
Your taxes are going to change based on how your property moved relative to the average of the town.
Yeah, maybe something's saying that. Now, the grand list has, yeah, gone up. Some people are seeing it in their own assessment. Some people aren't. But the mill rate itself will be reduced, right?
Good news, your car tax will go down.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's if the state doesn't get stupid again with, with, you know, our cars are now all worth $100,000 and they're 10 years old.
You can, you can recommend free beach passes now.
That fight is coming. I think we've commented on the mill rate in the past at this meeting. And Percy, you're very, very valid point. People's tax bill is not the same as the bill rate. But I think as long as we qualify, we're talking about the mill rate.
Yeah.
And not somebody's tax bill. I'm comfortable with having an estimate or approximation as part of our presentation. I say ours, Peggy.
It's really Peggy. It's all. It's the Board of Selectmen, right? Okay, so, oh, you'll get a draft on Monday and you'll let me know.
Yeah.
If it's too wacky or something.
Yeah.
We'll keep it simple.
Yeah, and there's always different people watching each of these meetings. So I think it's never a bad thing to give the explanation of, you know, budget, how it relates to mill rate, you know, or assessments, how that changes mill rates and that sort of thing. But, you know, to assign an actual number to it, um, might make things.
You set the expectation.
Yeah, yeah. So, but providing the information about how everything relates to each other is never a bad thing to do.
Do you want me to put these suggestions in the public hearing presentation that we're making to the Board of Finance?
Oh, really? Put your feet to the fire?
I love this, uh.
Don't like that.
No, I just wanted to make sure that everybody, uh.
I don't think it's going to be a big surprise to these guys.
No, I think these are all things that they're expecting.
Considering already.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm trying to demonstrate that we recognize that the budget is, you know, we would have liked it lower, right? And so we want to find ways to make sure that the impact is, is minimal on the taxpayer. So I feel like if we didn't say something in this presentation, that we're expecting the Board of Finance to do some work, right? To, to make this, to mitigate all this. Um, we did a big job here, you know, going through the way we could do it. They now have an opportunity to make those changes. So, um, I guess, you know, I just want the public to, that we're not lying to this and that we're just not passing the buck on, right?
We've asked the Board of Finance to find X number of dollars and we've given them a path to it.
Right.
It's a good conversation. It's the same thing, yeah.
I think, I, I mean, I think it's fine to put in there. I think it's fine to show that we are.
It's on camera now.
Yeah, showing our, all we're talking about.
Yeah, we're talking about it now.
No, in, in there, I, we've had conversations, you know, um, I've talked to the chair and everything. It's just a, I was just trying to figure out like, you know, I want to make sure we have unified messaging and that we're all working to make this to mitigate the impact as much as possible.
And I think it's good too because it's showing, you know, like the ECS funding, right? You know, it's showing, you know, why, it's giving a little bit of an explanation as to why our fund balance has grown to what it is. And, you know, now we're making this change because.
Right.
We, we feel that we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, back, back in those days, Governor Malloy was saying, not only are we not going to give you the funding, we're going to send you a bill for all the pensions.
Yes.
Teacher's pensions.
Right, exactly.
And we went, oh God, you know, this is not going to go well for us.
Yeah.
And, and the best thing to do was just play it on zero.
Yeah.
And hope that it's not negative.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, but yeah, and memories are short with that kind of stuff. So, you know, bringing it back into the conversation as to, you know, how we got to this point and, you know, now why are we making this change, right? You know?
I think any context.
Yeah.
These kind of conversations.
Well, if we put that extra ECS money in, then we really can afford to give free beach passes.
See, here we go. Wait, I was just waiting.
But only cars, only cars that are registered in Madison. If the car is registered in Vermont or Florida, doesn't matter. Cause it's a parking pass from Madison Cars.
Well, that is what, what 300, 400, $1,000 you get in, uh, revenue, right?
No, not from the passes themselves.
Yeah, the total, I think the total revenue project for, yeah, I thought it was like $300,000 or something. I'm excited.
I don't think it's out to you.
181, or maybe I'm making all of each of them right, maybe that's because of the programs and stuff. It doesn't.
184.
Yeah, 184. Why did I think 300? That must be all of, um, each and right, because they get revenue from their programs.
They do get revenue from the programs.
Right, yeah. It might be all. Okay. Okay, well, good. So I think we're, I think we're done.
We did our work.
Good.
Yo, one, put the hands up. So we don't need to meet Monday at six?
Uh, so, oh, um, question though, should I put this on Monday night's agenda though? Then the formal appropriations are not, just save it for lunch meeting? We want to do it before they meet.
Don't, don't, or no, doesn't really matter.
I don't think there's much.
Okay, there's not much. Okay, good, okay, okay. So we have a 7:00 PM meeting then on Monday.
So we do not have to have the workshop. And, yeah, so we're off, so I think just. Okay, so I think we can stop recording. The meeting is adjourned.
Yes.